We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see you here. We'll start with prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call as usual. Dear Father, we thank you for this day and the freedom to meet. We ask for your blessings for our community. We ask for wisdom in our decision making this evening. Thank you for the freedoms that we have been allowed to enjoy. Thank you for those that serve and protect us and our country. It is in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
President.
Jones.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
And Beverly's absent.
We have an amended agenda in front of us tonight since it wasn't posted for everybody. I guess we should probably have a motion to amend the agenda and accept it.
Make that motion.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay. You have in your packet the May 21st regular council meeting minutes for approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
You have a bills list in your packet tonight with it looks like the addition of another one from Borderline Construction.
And it's not a new format. I just skipped a step.
I recognize that.
Look at it upside down.
Look at it like that.
You say Borderline's the one that was added to the amendment?
Uh-huh. Borderline's final is 23, I mean 22-981.
And is it open, Jim?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
And being used.
Has all the paperwork been finalized with reports?
There's still a few items left for, it's substantially complete, but there's still a few items left for the final punch list.
I'm excited.
Stuff like, he did some caulking today, little things like that.
Jim, I spoke to Val about this, but I don't remember. She told me the police department is definitely closing the restrooms at night. Are they also opening them?
No. I've not asked the chief to do that.
I've not, we've not been doing either.
Val told me the police was going to close up the restrooms at night.
And as far as closing goes, the way we understood is obviously that if there's something important going on, they're not going to stop everything and rush down there and close the bathrooms. So, it may not be, um, we can make sure they're open in the morning.
Well, that's...
The street, Parks Department between us, we can make sure they're open.
What about Saturdays and Sundays?
Uh, maybe we'll start a rotation.
We have somebody go to the water tower every weekend, don't you?
We do have someone on sewer and water duty, so, we will tie that into that.
Okay, I just... Isn't that Park's responsibility?
Well, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of all of our responsibility. We're all kind of the same team, aren't we? Yeah, you're right. It falls under Park.
Yeah, and they're there. I mean, they're swimming pool.
But they're out there at night times. They can't be there, I mean, they're there at 6:00 in the morning to open it up.
I understand that. They're going to close it. They're going to close it, but...
Seven days a week. You expect Garrett Val to go up there and open it up Saturdays and Sunday mornings?
Well, I don't know if Garrett they will, but who's in charge of the pool and stuff like that?
Well, doesn't open till noon.
Well, I'm glad at least you know the police department's closing them up now.
Well, we had, we had talked about that at Park Board, and I had mentioned it real quick, Officer Fran, let's talk about Park Board.
Yeah, we've, we've heard about doing it before.
Right, but nothing official has been asked, right. Nothing official.
And so then, is that only the new restrooms or is that all the Park? Who does, yeah, well, ain't I...
Yeah, that building, concession people do in charge of all the...
Yeah, the pavilions always locked unless it's rented out.
Yeah, I don't think there's any other restrooms.
The ball associations are in charge of their own.
Ball associations are in charge of theirs, and the pool's open when the pool's open.
Right.
Okay. Well, who's been unlocking it now? I was going to say, when I was down there, it was locked.
The contractor. Because he's still had little items to do yet, such as we've got to figure out which ones are men's and women's even though they're both identical.
My thought was, my thought was, we're going to be unisex and it didn't matter.
Yeah, that's probably what we're going to end up. I don't know. I got to find out where to get stickers like that. Maybe you know where I could go to.
Just online's all I can think of.
Northern...
Because I was on Park Board at that time when we started with that process, and we talked about not having a men's and women's, you know, if there's two boys that can go to the restroom, they have two different restrooms they can use, or two girls can go to the restroom, it's, they're unisex.
Yeah.
And they lock the door behind them.
Right.
So, not more than one kid going there. It's not a group restroom, it's a single restroom.
That's not something that was discussed at the Park Board meeting, but I would like to...
Urinal in one specific?
Have that, no.
No, in neither one.
No.
Well, guess it really wouldn't matter, would it?
No.
A lot of schools that are being built, they've been going the same thing, transgender restrooms. They have not same boy restroom, girls restroom, they have special restrooms that are transgender. So, that's kind of a reason why they don't want to have a sex on there.
Yeah, why do you have to label them?
Would it have to be locked because of security vandalism? Is that the reason?
The, the big V-word, yeah, that would, that'd be the only reason I'd lock it. I'd be worried about vandalism.
But we're trying to be more secure with the park, reached our restrictions.
Speaking of, I just asked us, have we got signage yet that says the park is closed?
Be here in a couple of days, yeah. 11 o'clock.
We just had an officer who told someone they couldn't be in the park because it was closed.
There's signs down there. There's signage at Ben's Alley, and there's a sign on the Spencerville entrance. The only one that fell down or was tore up was the one going in from Bryan, of course, the main entrance. But, yeah, there's, it says 11 o'clock, so...
I may know the, be the only one that doesn't know this, but what, what park dugout was worked on? What was done?
Are you talking about the Buckeye Construction?
Yeah.
Those are the new ones on Field One.
The girls. Oh. Okay.
Really nice. Poor concrete in them and all gray siding, and they did a really good job on them.
I saw some guys down there, I didn't know what they were, they were doing.
Any other questions on bills?
Move we approve the bills?
Before we finish, the retainerage is in there.
I saw that, and...
So, if you approve the bills, so it's approved, just let you know.
I guess I may be also the only one that may not know. So, out of that retainerage, we did not withhold the dog fence that we paid for on Haver Drive. We did not withhold any expenses we'll have in replacing someone's landscaping in their yard and all that kind of stuff.
The dog fence can't took care of back, way back when. I remember that because the guy said he was going to save us money and himself time, and he went and got a radio.
Yeah, right.
$600 fence.
We paid the bill.
Right.
And I thought we were going to withhold it out of their retainer.
Oh, I didn't know.
And that was not done.
And I didn't know.
So, just wanted to make sure everybody knows that we're not withholding anything out of those expenses that we promised people.
Except the $1,700 for water equipment.
Okay. So, roll call, please.
Oh, I need some...
One second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Okay, next we have a notice of public hearing on June 21st at 6:00 PM at the zoning office. There's been a lot split application located, let's see, submitted by Kaduk Hillbrook LLC. It's a request to split lots. 38 Auditor's Platte, half of Auditor's Platte with a physical address of 520 West High Street. So, if anybody has an interest in that, they should be at the zoning inspector's office Thursday, June 21st at 6:00. Then we'll go on to boards and commissions, revolving loan committee met May 23rd. The minutes are on the table tonight. I don't know if you had a chance to read them before the meeting, but we do have on the agenda later on to pass some legislation for revolving loan to Hicksville Brewing Company. So, they'll go on to council committee reports, ordinance committee. Oh, we talked about this last time.
Yeah.
Okay? We already went over this, but it was about the height of the grass. Instead of eight inches, it's going to be six. Instead of 10 days, it was going to be three days.
And that's on the agenda, too.
And I believe someone told me that it is $75 for the first hour and $50 for the second hour, so, just so we have that correct in the legislation.
I, I actually, because we didn't talk about that the last meeting, I didn't change that from the old, and someone actually kind of corrected it, so.
Okay. Do you have any other things to report on the ordinance committee that you're working on or anything? All right, thank you. Water, sewer and refuge committee met May 21st. Someone like to report on that?
I wasn't at the meeting, but I know Ron and the people that were here, that was the same night as last council meeting, so they...
We talked about it.
Kind of the same thing. We brought some of that up. Black truck coming in sometimes.
Be nice if it was Thursday or Friday, probably next week.
Got some work you need to do with it? Is that why you say that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to get started right away.
All right. The administrators' report, please.
Uh, that's in the packet. I don't know if there's anything new to report that's not in the, it wasn't in the water and sewer meetings or any of the other committee meetings, so...
How many trees are you planning to have removed?
There was, in the budget, there was enough, and we had to, you know, first of all, get an estimate on some of them, and Levy Hicksville Tree Service was able to give us a budget and a little bit better pricing than before. You know, it really depends on the size and the scope, and once they get up in there, how much time it's going to take, because you can't just drop big logs anywhere. You've got to be careful in not to bust up street and bust up sidewalks, and so they factor that into their pricing, I'm sure.
Did you leave any money in the budget for replanting trees?
Nope, I did not.
Okay. Have you had some calls about people, that people have called me wanting to know that they, you know, if they were going to get a tree?
Number one, they will not get a tree this year. Number two, they will not get a tree that's as big as the tree we replaced, because I actually had that question, believe it or not, and the tree we replaced is like 80-foot. So, but we will replace all the trees that are in a spot where it's conducive to replace, you know, if it's...
What about power lines or...
Yeah, if there's power lines there, we can still replace that tree, but it needs to have some thought to it as far as what type of tree. And nowadays, there's a lot of education on ornamentals that don't grow so high and don't get up into the cabling and the power lines and all that.
Years ago, Kent and I and Stephanie Miller did the tree assessment all over town on every street. We dug dirt, we made notes of power lines and sewer lines and water lines, and we went through a list of acceptable trees for every street in Hicksville. So, that is all calculated out if we stick to that plan.
And we are using that.
Okay.
Yep. The same folder's got your handwriting in it, I'm here.
Is this up to the landowner if they want the tree? Is that how you're doing it? Or are you just putting it there because you want it there, or you took one out of there?
Um, I have never had anyone ask me that question.
I'm sure there's a lot of people that don't want them. I mean, a lot, but there's a few.
I'd say it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah. Actually, I think you should before you plant one, just in case, so we're not taking it out.
The three I've encountered so far, they all want their trees replaced. One of them may not happen on that property. They may get the one on the front, but not on the side because they're on a corner lot, because the one on the side is so tight to the sidewalk, and then there's asphalt. There's like this much grass. I'm not, I'm not a fan of planting a tree in that, that small of an area. It's, you know, it's going to, it's not going to last as long. It's not going to have the air to breathe because it's surrounded by asphalt and concrete, just like downtown trees. They don't live as long.
I agree with you, Sheila, under the circumstances of them having to take care of their sidewalks and, you know, if they think a tree's going to hump up their sidewalk and they don't want one, I guess that should be their choice, too, in my opinion. I like trees, but I'm not replacing their sidewalk, so. All right, anything else? Jim, you want to report to us?
Not having anything at this time.
Okay. All right, we'll go on to the solicitor's report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2018-05, a third reading by caption only, an ordinance amending chapter 951 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding refuse collection.
Make motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
And then next I have ordinance 2018-07, the first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending chapter 905 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding noxious weeds and declaring an emergency. That's what Sheila talked about. The only thing that changes is underlined and in bold, and it's, the height went from eight inches to six inches in 905.01A, and the, in 905.06, or I'm sorry, 05, the timeframe went from 10 days to three days on the send and then after the notice is sent that they have to move.
Okay. It says it's declaring an emergency. Do you...
Make motion to suspend the rules and...
Don't have to, but if you want to.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes. So, that's second and third reading of ordinance 2018-07 by caption only, an ordinance amending chapter 905 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding noxious weeds and declaring an emergency.
So, move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes. Next is resolution 2018-04, third reading by caption only, resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the fire chief to dispose of property no longer needed for public use as it is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired and has no value. So, to revise code 721.15.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
And then next is resolution 2018-07, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with the Hicksville Brewing Company, LLC and declaring an emergency. And this is the revolving loan that Diane talked about, that the minutes are in there. I would note from my conversations, I had a conversation with Dennis Miller today that, after I read the minutes, to make sure the minutes made reference to their, it just said there'd be a blanket lien on equipment, and it also said a first lien on the real estate over here. It actually would be a second lien on both of those. There's a primary lender that when they first opened business, loaned them the money that obviously is in first position on the building and on their existing equipment. So, everything else is in there is the same. The real estate over there is actually owned by the Hicksville Brewing Company. It's just a separate company that's affiliated, and so, because that's the entity that's getting the loan, the brewery's actually run by, the business is run by Two Bandits, so part of the guarantees are also going to include a corporate guarantee from Two Bandits Brewing.
Who has the paperwork, Troy?
Dennis has the paperwork. He told me he'd have it to me in a couple of days. The reason this is an emergency, my understanding is from talking to Mike Barthas, Mark from Two Bandits, they're not going to need the money per se until maybe August or September, but they, there's a build-out time on their equipment, and they want to order that, and they, of course, don't want to do it until, you know, we've gave our approval and said we're going to loan them the money. So, if we do that, he'll go ahead and order the stuff, and then probably within a couple of weeks or so, we'll be able to have all the documents. I'm going to look them over and see if there are any changes, and then when it's time to do the closing, then they can do it. But the money part of it's not the rush on it, it's so he can order the equipment. So, for a month or so from now, six weeks from now, it's ready.
I assume he should still wait until we get the documents signed, though?
Who should still wait?
Mark, before he orders his equipment?
That's his call. He wanted it passed, I think is why he was making multiple calls to multiple people today, wondering if it was on the agenda today, but, yeah, I mean, the sooner the better. Dennis said it'd probably be a couple of days he'd have it to me, if I talked to him about.
I see the committee was unanimous. I was just reading it here. So, I move to suspend the rules. I'll second.
I do have, I guess I do have one question, now that I've picked them up. You know, in the minutes, it said that it could be up to 150,000.
That's one of the reasons I had to call Dennis, because I said I can't really do the resolution unless I know the amount. He said do the lower amount now, and then if, he thinks that's the number, because they didn't have the exact figure on what their construction was going to cost, and if for some reason after the fact, then we may have to come back with like a second, like smaller...
Okay. I wondered how we would handle that. Okay, roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
And then next is resolution 2018-07, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with the Hicksville Brewing Company, LLC and declaring an emergency. And this is the revolving loan that Diane talked about, that the minutes are in there. I would note from my conversations, I had a conversation with Dennis Miller today that, after I read the minutes, to make sure the minutes made reference to their, it just said there'd be a blanket lien on equipment, and it also said a first lien on the real estate over here. It actually would be a second lien on both of those. There's a primary lender that when they first opened business, loaned them the money, that obviously is in first position on the building and on their existing equipment. So, everything else is in there is the same. The real estate over there is actually owned by the Hicksville Brewing Company. It's just a separate company that's affiliated, and so, because that's the entity that's getting the loan, the brewery's actually run by, the business is run by Two Bandits, so part of the guarantees are also going to include a corporate guarantee from Two Bandits Brewing.
Who has the paperwork, Troy?
Dennis has the paperwork. He told me he'd have it to me in a couple of days. The reason this is an emergency, my understanding is from talking to Mike Barthas, Mark from Two Bandits, they're not going to need the money per se until maybe August or September, but they, there's a build-out time on their equipment, and they want to order that, and they, of course, don't want to do it until, you know, we've gave our approval and said we're going to loan them the money. So, if we do that, he'll go ahead and order the stuff, and then probably within a couple of weeks or so, we'll be able to have all the documents. I'm going to look them over and see if there are any changes, and then when it's time to do the closing, then they can do it. But the money part of it's not the rush on it, it's so he can order the equipment. So, for a month or so from now, six weeks from now, it's ready.
I assume he should still wait until we get the documents signed, though?
Who should still wait?
Mark, before he orders his equipment?
That's his call. He wanted it passed, I think is why he was making multiple calls to multiple people today, wondering if it was on the agenda today, but, yeah, I mean, the sooner the better. Dennis said it'd probably be a couple of days he'd have it to me, if I talked to him about.
I see the committee was unanimous. I was just reading it here. So, I move to suspend the rules. I'll second.
I do have, I guess I do have one question, now that I've picked them up. You know, in the minutes, it said that it could be up to 150,000.
That's one of the reasons I had to call Dennis, because I said I can't really do the resolution unless I know the amount. He said do the lower amount now, and then if, he thinks that's the number, because they didn't have the exact figure on what their construction was going to cost, and if for some reason after the fact, then we may have to come back with like a second, like smaller...
Okay. I wondered how we would handle that. Okay, roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And then the other things I have, I had a somewhat lengthy conversation with the Sherwood new solicitor about the bill of income tax today. What we've decided is that at our next meeting is also their, the same day as their monthly meeting. We're both going to bring legislation on that as far as entering into a contract with one another. We're still hashing out the final details on the contract, but that, no problem. Sherwood has to give a notice by July 1st to their current provider of income tax services, so that would allow us to consider and have all the paperwork around, and then he's got the notice ready to be done and sent out after that meeting. And then that wouldn't be effective then, though, until the beginning of the year, beginning of 2019 is when we would start. We'd obviously have some stuff we'd have to do administratively here to get ready, but the actual income tax portion of it would be till then. It's on there. Our cap, like I mentioned at the last meeting, I've reviewed the two contracts that Roberta sent me. I haven't seen the combined one. Now that I'm back, I will email, I have that on my list to email her tomorrow and see where that contract is. Underground Utilities, I sent email after our last meeting explaining our position on the releasing the retainerage less than $1,700. I got an email back that said okay. I mean, it was literally like a one line, "Okay, what about the other issue, which is the dirt?", which I either forwarded on to Cheryl or Jim or somebody, because I was getting ready to leave, and I don't know if anybody's heard anything on that while I was gone or not.
No.
You heard anything more about their claim for extra money?
No, no, I have not.
And EMHT hasn't responded to anything really much either.
It's in the bill.
They did?
Yeah, you just approved it.
Fire chief?
Just a couple of things. In the resolution you just passed, the helmets were listed. I'd like to be able to give those to the firemen that had the helmets, if that's all right. And the tower's back. No one got it today. We'll be training on again next Tuesday and hopefully have it in service before long.
Are we able to give our helmets away?
No, we just said they're no longer needed and can be disposed of.
Oh, I thought they were making a lot of stuff in two things.
The other stuff that are, that's part of the, able to dispose of them.
Okay. Anything else for the fire chief? Thank you.
I'm glad you're back, and I hope you don't have to eat.
Yeah.
Just the transmission, anything major, just?
They found a few, a couple, a fuel line that had some CPs in it they wanted replaced, but other than that, it's all good.
But the transmission's all new, the whole thing, ready to go?
Yes.
Good.
That's good.
All right, we will go on to the EMS chief report.
I gave to Cheryl last week a full listing of runs for the month of May. You should have them in your packet. If not, I can send them out to you. We had 36 runs, kind of a slow month for us, especially from the prior month. And it went pretty well. I did today send out 247 bills to everybody. So people are going to be knocking on your doors and on mine. So I'm just alerting you to let you know that they are, that the bills have been sent out along with a letter that Troy and I came up with. And everybody got the same letter and, along with the bill. And if they have any questions, all they have to do is give me a call at the station. So I have that. Other than that, just to let you know, for the past couple of weeks, for the past two weeks, Bob has ran 224 hours. I have ran 209, and John has been on call for 164. So we are actively pursuing, trying to pursue more EMTs. I threw something out on my own Facebook page, which I would like to, I don't know what the policy is for Facebook pages around here, so I would like to start an EMS page where I can put stuff out and ask, you know, kinda do, kinda do the whole, the whole, "Did you know?" kinda things and, you know, that kinda thing. So I don't know what you guys had thought about that. I would be the only administrator, so I would have final say of what gets put on.
Is that okay, Troy?
Cheryl, would you like to, you've been...
Part of records retention, so see me.
Yep.
I can do that. I see you every day, so.
Why does the abbreviation AMS stand for?
Alter mental status.
You can tell them you also take credit cards now.
Yes. As of the beginning of the month, we are now set up through the village website where we can take credit card payments for any EMS bills. So if they want to pay by credit card, all they gotta do is go to www.villageofhicksville.com, and where they would go to pay their utility bill, their water bill, or income tax bill. They can also do the drop-down to where the EMS and pay their, pay their bill online as well. And that will go to Cheryl, and Cheryl will alert me, so.
That's great.
So these people, can you make, if they can't afford making the payments, would you help them in making a payment plan?
Yeah, that's what, that's what this bill payment agreement was, was part of the, part of the issue is that, you know, if you can't afford to pay the $500 or $700 bill or even the $110 bill, you know, just come see me. Well, let's, let's work something out, you know. The biggest thing is just trying to get people to call me, so that way we don't have to go further into this process, you know, so.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Troy.
Okay, we will go on to the park report. Ron, are you here to give a park report?
Just really nothing other than, oh, come on, you've discussed most everything, as far as that goes. Pool opened today, and of course, it's cooler today, which last week was hot, hot. And my wife informed me that there were some comments, I guess, on Facebook, wondering why we had not opened the pool last week on 90 degrees. And the answer to that, of course, is that all of, or most of our lifeguard were still in school. And the rest of it, that amounts to, I do dugout for one, and also a couple of the other fields had, where they had the, like, cars for backing, backed down, and they put up siding on the backs of them, which looks much, much better. That's basically it. Everything's running pretty smooth.
Great. Thank you. No questions for Ron from anybody? All righty. We will go to the fiscal, there is a notation on there that there's a request to change a park labor position from an hourly to a salary.
Do you want that to go to the personnel committee first?
I would say so, yes. Okay, fiscal officers' report?
Okay, you have the month-to-date cash report. The mayor's court report was in your packet, a letter from the OML, and the May income tax report. The utility collections, Dawn just got back from vacation today, so she put, got it ready as soon as she got here. And finally, I put in the SJS portfolio, which is our investments that we have with Charles Schwab. And at the next meeting, we should have the ones, another portfolio from Multibank Securities with our new investments.
There is a letter in here from the OML. I know that residents have told me that they got a letter in the mail about their service line, a service line warranty program. And, you know, we don't, we weren't, you know, like, condoning that. The OML is offering something on that through them, so I guess if the, I, this might be an insurance issue, not our normal kind of insurance issue, but if the committee just wants to take that under consideration or ignore it, you know, I mean, it's up to you guys. I just wanted to point it out that it's in the packet, and the Ohio Municipal League is offering some type of a protective service, and it's not, you know, we don't, so.
Water and sewage, Terry, to take a look at that?
Well, water and sewer could, yes. That would be fine.
It includes overhead service drops, too. So OML wanted to educate people on not putting giant trees in your backyard to grow through your service drop, and you get ice on them in the winter, and the branch goes down and takes your service drop with it.
Okay.
That was part of their, their education on this.
All right. Thanks for adding that. The, the income tax collections look good for this time of year, so that's good news. I noticed our general fund is getting lower than normal.
I'm starting to sweat. I'm sweating.
In the finance report, yeah, usually we have a, a higher balance than that. Does anyone have any questions for Cheryl? I'd just like, I have a few papers here to mention, but I just wanted to mention that the village of Hicksville has an updated website. It's still villageofhicksville.com, but, you know, there's a new look to it if you haven't been on it for a while. And there's also a place for volunteer opportunities and, you know, all kinds of information that might be helpful. If you haven't been on it for a while, you might wanna look at it. And, let's see here. You know, we had a conversation in the past about if anybody wanted, anybody outside the village wanted our water and sewer services that we talked about, making a manx to get that. Well, if you read your, one of your Ohio Municipal League legislative bulletins dated May 25th, there's a section about that where the, they're discussing that in the state of Ohio. They're concerned with municipal rates charged to towns or presidents on water and sewer, and with cities withholding water and sewer services from them by forcing them to annex or pay to play. So if you haven't read your municipal bulletin, there's also items in there, subjects about water improvements, volunteer tax credits, police body cameras, mixed-use tax credits, all kinds of things, you know. So, if you're interested. And then on May 18th, I had a business and industry luncheon at Community Memorial Hospital. We had Rick Rostifer, the general manager at STMA, tell the, tell the people there of what's, what's going on in the community with that. Do you wanna add more?
SMTA.
Oh, did I say it backwards again? It says STMA in my paper. Yep, that's a mistake. Okay, and then we also had Sarah Stubblefield as a project manager from Northwest Community State College speak about industrial automation maintenance programs that Northwest State Community has to train people, to help the employers, a specific employer, train people to, to work for them. And then Brad Greer also spoke to employers about filling job openings and using interns for jobs. And Jim Brown was invited to, we introduced him as village administrator. And Nelson Hirschberger from Tri-State Dairy brought samples of cheese and turnovers, and everybody really liked it. It was well-attended. Ron and Mike were there, so.
They had ice cream there, too.
Oh, yeah, and ice cream. It was very nice. And then I got a letter from Brad Gre, Brad Greer, who spoke there, and it said, "Thank you for including NSCC and the excitement of Hicksville's growth. The Hicksville community has been a tremendous asset to our campus, and we look forward to training Hicksville's future workforce." So that's it for my additional notes. And then Mike Barth has made a list of people that we wanna commend and recognize around the community.
Thanks, Mayor. Special congratulatory thanks to Ryland Bassett. He won the Defiance County Shake competition. He's a local young student here, and I believe Eric's nephew, so congratulations to him. I wanna congratulate all the graduates for the high school, four county and college who have made it through this year and moving on to different things with their lives. So congratulations, good luck to all of them. Special thanks to the American Legion, all the volunteers who helped, and the fire department, police. A lot of people were there for the Memorial Day parade. It was well-attended, very nice there for the community and EMS and everybody. But thank you for all the military personnel and all the people who came together and helped put that together. It was a nice parade and program. Summer lunch program kicked off today at the park, and that is hosted by the hospital. It is, lunch is offered from 12 to 12:30 at the Rotary Park Pavilion. They are still looking for some volunteers to help do the program and help with some of the youngsters down there and participating in that. So if you are interested and have time to help there during that time every day, Monday through Friday, please contact the hospital. I wanna get your side up to help. What else was there? Special congratulations to the baseball team for their state run. That was pretty neat. And also the, the Tracksters who, we had three participants in the state track meet this year that made it to state also. So the school is well-represented at the state level with baseball and track, and congratulations to them and well-deserved honors for them and all they did this year. I think that's it, Mayor. Did I forget anything?
I don't think so.
Motion to adjourn? Or is anybody in?
Yeah. Is there anyone sitting in the audience that would like to ask any questions or say anything?
I'll make motion to adjourn.
I'm not, I'm not in the audience, but can I, can I go ask something really quick or make a comment? After adopting authorization to sell the old equipment, which we talked about at water and sewer, and we got authorization to do that through water and sewer, I will need a notice of intent to sell to be published. And I can just work that out with Mike, correct? To get that in the paper?
Notice to, notice of intent to sell?
Yes, to have it published and...
Okay, that's what I was wondering. All right.
Oh, yeah. We had our first summer concert at the Huber Opera House side porch last Friday night, and it was really enjoyed. The wannabes played, and I'm sure we would've had even more people there had the, all the activities in Columbus were going on. So that took some of our crowd, but it was still very well-attended, and I heard a lot of good things about it. So I hope the community will support the future concert, the future concerts, so. Do we have a motion to adjourn yet?
Yes, in a second.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?